This conference will now be recorded.
During the fire, I think we stand for what's to slip for our city government and our elected officials and our official bases so help the city to prosper underneath their guidance in Wise County. For official places, we are the first responders as well, and continue to monitor our city and our official bases to protect them, save them. Certainly thankful for police department as well as the fire department, official places allow them to continue to excel in excellence. And official places allow us as patrons of Rome to be thankful for them, for official places to continue to be of the city and actually continue to grow. Our official places allow our local officials to make the wisest decisions and our official places can respond there. Please stay up right.
What believe is real life and the highest highest government, through the republic, police sustain, one nation, a great home, in this world, delivering justice for all. All of the elected fire, those who disagree, the president, I say.
As I stand here before everyone. That's okay. As I stand here before everyone, I must say, I'm a very confident woman. I might have been knocked down a few times recently. But I have overcome the issues, even though I'm crying. I've been knocked down a few times to overcome the issues I've been dealt with. But I am very proud when I joined the city council. Some time ago, when I ran, I did it because my neighbors and I. Because of a situation, sorry. We do not bring it up, the situation on the internet or talk about it in passing. It was in the past, even though it cost us a measly $14,000. It was done for a dirty handshake from council members and a developer. After that, I joined, still being very confident, and fought for the citizens and their rights. At the end of my term, I did not decide to stay on, to be involved with the city for the display of embarrassment. Going forward today, I had nothing to do with this election, just guilty by association. I was humiliated by some of the same adults. And what was posted by some of of open records that were pulled from years ago. But hey, it happens by some of the people in this town. But here we are. Going forward, I have nothing to do with what was done. But hey, I got out and voted. I only hope that some of the citizens would have done the same thing, but. That's okay. It's been happening. But hey, neighbors, you need to do the same thing. Sorry, I got lost. With that being said, neighbors, you need to get out and vote going forward. You also need to go directly to.
Can I keep going?
Just a little bit.
Okay. Neighbors, you need to go to your council members and go directly because they're the only ones that can make a difference with your city administrator. Back to the social media. And what took place during this election? It was humiliating to yourself and to the ones that pride themselves in hiring the distinguished city administrator. We are very lucky to have a leader who cleaned up the messes by the one prior. To our mayor Pro Tim, you need to walk in, to walk out with shame. You humiliated me for my disability. I have brain surgery in five days and y'all humiliated me for my disability. And I had nothing to do with what y'all wanted to do with me, just because I was guilty by association. So I hope that some of you take shame in what y'all have done to this city and going forward, because every developer, every homeowner, and every business owner, look at your actions. Because I had nothing to do with it. So going forward, think about what you do. Because when I'm sitting in the hospital, I will not think about what any of y'all have done to me.
Thank you, Mrs. Matures. I'm sorry. Do we have another one?
Deborah B. Kraft. I'm Deborah B. Kraft. I live at 360 West Second. First, congratulations to the newly-elected and re-elected council members. I wish you the best of luck. And I'm sure if you follow the state laws, local government codes, and city ordinances, you will do well, especially if you keep in mind that you are here to represent the citizens and do what's best for the city. While I admire that you are very concerned with taking care of our employees, it has seemed that taking care of the citizens is a way on the bottom of the list. Please keep in mind, you are not here to make things the way you want them, but to represent us, the citizens. I'm praying that this council changes the way things have been going for the past three years. As anyone that served in the service knows, and I'm betting it's the same in law enforcement, you don't have to like the person in office, but you still respect the office. That has not happened since Mayor Wilson was elected. We all know there's animosity towards Mayor Mitchell, but she has not been given a fair chance since the day she was elected. That must stop now. I'm not saying you need to have her do the negotiations or the hiring and firing, but as the highest elected official in the city, she should be included in those meetings, allowed to give her thoughts, even if you disagree with her. At least respect the citizens who voted her into office by listening to her. By including her in all city business. This is so that when other cities officials ask about something, she can respond with facts rather than, this is the first I've heard about it, and we've heard that a lot. For three years, what has been shown to the public is that their voice and vote mean nothing to those in office because you didn't like who they voted in. You have shown this to the city, to the department heads, to all the employees, who should all respect the office of mayor, not, they don't have to like the person, they don't have to respect the person, but the office. And to everyone in the county, that's what they've seen. Like I said, you don't have to like the person, but if you want this town to stop being a laughingstock, then the change is up to you, the council. Please do so. Thank you.
Any other announcements? All right, move along. Consent agenda, number one, minutes of city council regular session dated April 20th, 2023, and renewal of contract with RISE broadband.
Mayor, the contract with RISE broadband I need to table until the next meeting. We have some contract negotiations still yet.
All right, so we're just going to vote on the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and. Monthly staff reports and board minutes. Number one, departments, administration, building, development, fire, rescue, municipal court, police, and public works. And then also swearing in of Officer Christopher Garrett. And his lovely wife, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As the chief, this is one of my favorite things to do, especially when we can add somebody of the caliber of Christopher Garrett. Joining the Rome PD tonight is Officer Christopher Garrett. Officer Garrett is a 17-year veteran with experience ranging from active shooter events to residential and commercial crime prevention. Just some, and when I say some, like he has a list a mile long of his credentials and training and abilities. But some of his training and train the trainer includes Alert Crace Instructor, Alert Active Attack Integrated Response Instructor, Firearms Instructor, AR-15 and Glock Armor. He's a standardized field sobriety test instructor, and he is a crime prevention specialist, which is SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, certified. He holds a Masterpiece Officer license, and I'm told on good authority that he's a DWI hound. So if you're planning to drive or operate a motor vehicle in Wise County intoxicated, you may not want to do that when Officer Garrett is on duty, not here in Rome at least. He is married to his wife Jennifer, standing here with their son. And they have, wait for it, eight children? So yes.
Where's the others?
So his hobbies include working on and driving cars. He's brought a couple of those to the PD already. He builds firearms, and he is a competitive shooter. And I know Robert Heinsohn isn't excited about what he's hearing tonight. So please help give me a warm welcome to a great addition to the Rome PD family, Chris Garrett. Stand behind him or behind me. So if you'll stand right here, right in front of me, raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Police Officer for the City of Rome, state of Texas, and I will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. I believe Jennifer is going to come up and pin his badge on for him.
Come here, Jennifer. You want me to hold that back?
Okay, here we go. Y'all might remember from last time that whenever we bring somebody on board, they're joining the entire Rome PD team. So we want to get a quick photo with our new teammate on his new team.
Move in a little closer. Say cheese. All right. Okay. So this is a special meeting. Normally, our meetings are on Wednesdays, and so we've called this, and the date was set to comply with the deadline for canvassing the election votes. So I am going to go ahead and move number eight, number nine, and number 10 up on the agenda. We'll go ahead and get that taken care of. Let's do the canvassing of the election results from May 6, 2023, general election, and that's be the city administrator.
I'm sorry. I would rather it stay the same, and I'd like to make a motion that the agenda stay the same.
Am I no longer the presiding officer?
And I'll second.
What's the statute on that? I looked for something. Okay. All right. Let the record show that the mayor has been, oh, the presiding officer of this meeting has been overridden by this council.
Which is what our prerogative is.
That's fine. All right.
Say aye. I'll second.
All right. I had actually asked for this to be done last Friday with the city administrator. And so that's where we are, folks. I wanted to go ahead and get these folks in because Ms. Ty and Mr. Schumake, they will stay on and continue the business of the city, whereas basically for the first part of our meeting, we are leaving our newly affected people, newly elected people out of touch. So, all right.
We also have old business that we need to deal with.
I'm sure that, I'm sure that the newly elected people could deal with it as well.
Correct. But I believe since we've been discussing it, that we need to finish it.
I get it. All right. Number one, ordinance 2023 dash zero two, updating staff roles and responsibilities.
Mayor, we need a vote on the motion that's on the floor before we move forward.
Okay, let's vote. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the motion to override the presiding officer will stand. Okay. Old business, number one, ordinance 2023 dash zero two, updating staff roles and responsibilities.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that we discussed on April the 20th. I was asked to clean up the memo and bring back that ordinance to council for approval. This was actually something that I had on consent, and the mayor asked that it be removed and put on the old business portion for discussion. So I'm happy to answer any questions. You will see in the agenda commentary that you've been given that the yellow is either going to be struck or changed to show what is in black thereafter. I have checked to make sure that this information matches the local government code and matches the ordinances that have been passed. You have had some from 2018 and before that are not congruent with the ordinances that you passed in 2022, so this cleans up that language. Any questions that I can answer?
I believe we discussed this in the last meeting, correct?
Correct. The only change to the ordinance that's in your packet, if you will look on section 9.01.004, there was a typo in that that Councilmember Ty brought to my attention. Under B, it says removal by city council. That is the old language. It should say removal by city administrator, which is what follows the verbiage thereafter. That is the only thing changed in the ordinance from what your packet shows to what we have this evening.
It actually looks like this is a combination of changing one, two, three, four, five ordinances?
Five different sections of the code.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the new ordinance, updating staff roles and responsibilities.
I second. All in favor? And number two, personnel handbook update.
Thank you, Mayor. This also is one that we reviewed on April the 20th, and I was given direction by council to bring it back in its edited format with all of the changes made. I did remove the two sections that we had some clarity that I needed on it, where we removed the reference to searching staff members' private cell phones or other mobile devices. I also removed the inspection notice of personal computing devices. It was discussed on the 20th that that seemed intrusive for staff, and so I removed those from this document.
I make a motion that we accept the personnel handbook update.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wise County Sheriff Dispatch Fee update.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also an item that council asked for an update on. Since we met the last time, the topic has been brought up twice on the 27th and the 29th of April. The 27th of April was actually the Boyd City Council meeting where Sheriff Aiken came and presented his slide deck to their city council. That was the earliest that they could all have their schedules aligned. You'll recall, he came and presented to us in March. So just giving you an update on that particular portion of those conversations, the only thing that deviated in the presentation was the effective date. The sheriff has now moved the effective date to October of 2024 instead of October of 2023. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion, other than that would give folks more time to either budget and/or plan for such. Other than that, the presentation remains virtually unchanged. The data from the sheriff's presentation that we've talked about before, that was also reviewed by the Boyd City Administrator. He expressed that he did not believe the data was an appropriate comparison, as you couldn't determine how the other cities in the reference numbers marked their calls for service. It's my understanding, and I believe the sheriff discussed that when he was here, that every time the mic clicks for Wise County, that is considered a call for service, and they mark it as such. Some of the other cities in that particular dataset, if you will, may not follow that exact count procedure. And so there were some questions as to whether the calls for service were correct. For instance, some of the information showed that Rome had higher calls for service than Decatur or Bridgeport. They're both larger cities with considerably higher population than we have. They have equal amount of pass-through traffic. So what you would want to do is find out, is each click of the mic a call, or is each stop a call? And that would help validate the data. There was a very good question and answer session with the public. Both the sheriff and his deputy answered and fielded several from the residents and the elected officials. The comparison was again made by the sheriff's office of the other counties with buy-in that he has in his presentation of those who pay for dispatch services. The counterargument was that many of those cities and counties referenced had a much broader tax base than we do. They referenced Grapevine, Alito, and some others. We do not have that tax base with that revenue flow that comes to those cities. I believe Grapevine's budget is almost $200 million. So again, if you're going to look at it from a data perspective, we'd need to normalize the data to make sure we're comparing something that's comparable to Rome. No solution was actually discussed relative to how the delay of the program implementation would impact his hiring and retention. If you'll recall, one of the touch points for him was that they have seven open positions out of 16, which still exists as of the 27th meetings. And if he's going to delay some sort of implementation of this schedule and not go to the county for some additional funds, I'm not sure what's going to happen over the next 15 months with filling those positions. So I think that's something that they would still want to look at over this coming year. Ultimately, it was decided to support the sheriff's request. The mayor in Boyd and several others are going to go forward to request additional funding from the county commissioners. It was brought out in that meeting multiple times that none of the cities involved felt like that this was an inappropriate request, just an inappropriate source of funding. Since the sheriff receives the bulk of his monies from the county, they would prefer that he go to the county in this budget session and ask for those additional, almost $300,000 for this purpose. Many of these Southern Wise County mayors and council members will be at the commissioners' court meeting. That is going to be next Monday morning at 9:00 AM to show support for the sheriff and ask the commissioners to allocate that funding. So then the regional mayors met on the 29th. That was attended by several from Rome, Paradise, Boyd, New Fairview, Aurora, a lot of the folks who have been involved. Mr. Schumake was also on hand from Rome, and we had some representatives from the constable's office. During that presentation from the 27th and the commissioners' meeting, that was to be on the 8th, the meeting was moved to the 22nd. The sheriff was going to be out of town. And you will recall, there were two separate letters that have been addressed to be sent to the commissioners' court. At this point, they have decided to wait on either one. I learned today that Mr. Brian Dolan from Aurora is going to speak on behalf of this group of folks who have been meeting at that commissioners' court meeting on Monday, and I will bring back any progress to both our newly-elected folks and those who are continuing. Any questions? You may also have noticed that there was a very good article a couple of weeks ago about the dispatch fee that was in the messenger. Mayor Rodney from Boyd did talk about the fact that he wanted to make sure this was comprehensive, so he worked with the messenger to make sure that the information was consistent with that meeting. So if you haven't read it, I would highly recommend it because it's very consistent with what was discussed. Any questions on that?
Let's do it. The next one. Number four, city audit fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is something that has been not only on the mind of council, but it has been discussed in multiple circles outside this meeting. So I thought it would be good to bring this back to your attention again. We've been talking about this and I guess the delays that we've had in getting last fiscal year's audits completed. We have found a certified public accountant that can handle all of the pre-work, and I have included in your packet and sent to you previously the two-page document of the multiple things that we have to put together. It's not just as simple as running a report and handing it to the auditor. So we're working to pull all of these working papers together to get them to the auditing firm. You will call Mr. Bill Spoor was not available this year. There are several cities in our media area that had some of those same challenges. I understand that New Fairview managed to just finish their 2021 audit, so we are not alone in this particular path. One of the things that we had to also make sure is Fulcrum had to set up a VPN access for both. for both the auditing firm and the CPA, because it will cut down on our costs. They won't need to travel to the site. They managed to get that finished for us yesterday, so we do have access for those two individuals. And once all of the working papers are sent to MWH, they need at least 30 days to finish it. So I am really pushing to have this done at the end of June, first part of July. That will set the basis for all of the budget discussions that we need to have in July. Any questions on this issue?
All right, number five, citizen survey update.
Okay. You will recall, several months ago, we had a conversation and you all approved a document that we sent out to our residents, so I am bringing you back updates as to how well this has progressed. As of today, we only have 30 of them back. So I have put out a reminder on social media. I would ask that any of you here, please either fill yours out and get it back, or spread the word that we need those back. They have been very candid. They have been very direct. The information will be of benefit to council in the coming months and years, and so the more of those we get, the more representative it is of the community. They can drop it through the mail slot. They can bring it in during the day. They can mail it back to us however they choose. Like I said, we have been getting some good feedback on a variety of those topics, and I have sent out the one reminder on social media, and will be doing so throughout the rest of this month until it is actually closed on the 31st. Any questions on this topic?
All right, number six, outgoing remarks by council members. Again, this is again.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a tradition of issuing proclamations for special days, weeks, and individuals who have served the community. This May, council and staff are pleased to note the tireless efforts of two council members who will be leaving us and going on to other things, and we have two that are being retained and two new ones that are coming on to council. The proclamations have been prepared to be read at the meeting, and so please join us in thanking everyone who ran for office, as well as those who were elected and those who are continuing. You all have done an amazing job. Elaine, would you prefer first, or Mr. McCabe? Okay.
Hey, Josh here, up on the mic.
Can you hear me okay, Shanna?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, my apologies for not being there tonight. I'm in Tennessee. I'm attending my daughter's high school graduation tomorrow, so I'm pretty excited to see her into the future. She's got a lot of big things going on. I started this journey in 2017 after moving to Rome, and I've always believed that you should know what's going on in the area that you live, and if you don't participate, you don't know what's going on, and it directly affects you. My first time running for office was against Ms. Priest, and surprisingly, we saw eye to eye on a lot of the things we both agreed on that needed to be worked on in Rome. Infrastructure, growth, et cetera, things we always talk about. She won by a narrow margin, and I was okay with that. I didn't let it deter me because she was the right person for the job. I continued to be involved and was later appointed to fill a vacancy. My point is, even if you run against someone or don't agree on everything, you can still work together and compromise using effective communication skills. This council, as well as previous ones, has had the daunting task of correcting multiple issues that have been neglected for decades. Many people wanted to see, many people want to see the changes in front of their faces to know when something's being done, but unfortunately, there are behind-the-scenes issues that must be fixed first. What everyone needs to understand is that running a city is a business, and as in any business, there are rules, regulations, and laws that we must adhere to. ADA requirements, safety issues, health hazards, et cetera. We, as a city, not only have an obligation to our residents, but we have an obligation to our employees to provide them safe working environments that are up to code and free from any hazards. We are not doing that at this time. We, as a town, should be ashamed that we have let this go on for so long before trying to correct it. But now that the council is trying to correct these issues, we are perceived as the bad guys for making the necessary changes to bring us current with laws and regulations that are out of hands. I strongly urge this new council to band together and continue moving forward. Set all of your differences aside, communicate effectively and professionally, compromise where you can, work together to accomplish what's already been started. There is so much going on around us that we can't keep fighting the past. We need to work better together on the future. We need to work ahead of the game so that we aren't scrambling at the last minute to figure out how to make something work. You need to focus on infrastructure now. It's coming with a huge price tag, and we can't pay for it with the funds we have. Unless you can find some other way, you may have to look at raising taxes or push for another bond. Otherwise, when water gets here, we won't be able to afford it. I know I can leave here with my head held high tonight, knowing that I did the best I could while serving on this council. Contrary to popular belief, I had no personal agenda. I have in no way benefited from any of the decisions we have made, other than gaining more knowledge and how things work at the local level. There is enough division in our nation and worldwide today. We shouldn't have such division in our community. If we don't come together now to correct these many issues that we are facing, then we will fall further and further behind. There are several bills right now at the state level that are going to further restrict the actions that we, as a council, can take. So only over time, it'll become harder and harder for us to oversee our own city. If we don't take action now to plan for future in the right way, then the county or state may step in and determine the actions we take without our insight. If we can't provide the proper necessities to our staff and our residents as required by law, then they will step in and take action. That is not a threat. That is a fact. So I urge you strongly to band together and take action now to ensure the success of the future of Rome. There are many people that I need to thank tonight to help me along this path to where I am today. Mayor Emeritus Decredico. You've been somewhat of a mentor to me since I joined the council. You quickly helped me learn the roles of the council, mayor, staff. You brought professionalism to this council and the way that we all look to. You provided insight into the past, and we had to focus on certain issues for the future to correct and neglect. You explained topics and decisions in a way that everyone could understand if they just listened. I will forever be grateful for your experiences and knowledge you have afforded me over the years. Mr. Eason, we didn't always agree on everything, but you showed what it means to have an intelligent and professional conversation, to find common ground. You always presented the facts behind your reasoning in a way so the person has to listen. By calmly discussing many topics and collaborating, we are almost always able to find a mutually beneficial agreement than that everyone's needs. And Mr. Eason, let us never forget, it's 30 days, not 45. Michelle, you have been an asset to this council since the day you were appointed. Your calm demeanor and the way you listen to all sides is something everyone should strive for. You listen and ask the thoughtful questions, then discuss in a professional manner your concerns and recommendations. I hope more people learn from you that it's okay to sit back and listen, instead of saying the first thing that comes to mind. You have a lot of work ahead of you over this next term, so I hope you stay the course and continue doing what you've always done, looking out for Rome. Casey, you've hit the ground running since joining the council, and you haven't stopped. It's apparent that the people want to see you keep going and planning for the future. Like I said with Michelle, you have a lot of work ahead of you. Keep doing what you've been doing, and you will accomplish a lot, I'm sure. Carmen, I've appreciated your impartiality over the years. Your in-depth knowledge of city law has helped me to better understand the rules and regulations we must follow as a city. Without your counsel, I'm sure this town would have been in deeper trouble. And thank you for sharing your expertise with me and to show me that you don't need a degree to understand the law, and that ignorance of the law is not an excuse to break you. Chief Fitch, retired Chief Fitch, thank you for showing me what it means to stand up for your people. You have groomed one of the best fire departments in the area and always led by example, by showing you do the work that needs to be done, not because you have to, but because you need to. You put in more than your fair share of time with little payback, working with little, but still always rising above to go above and beyond in your field. Chief Debus, I didn't expect that you would be thrown under the fire as soon as we brought you on as chief of police, but you rose to the occasion in a bigger way than ever imaginable. Not only did you turn Rome PD into a department of pride and professionalism, you carried this city on your back in our time of need. Pulling double duty as police chief and interim city administrator, we couldn't have asked for any more from anyone. You have undoubtedly changed the face of Rome with your professional and calm demeanor. Thank you for sharing your knowledge with me, not only in policing, but in overall leadership, and that one does not need a badge to follow the law or know when it's being broken. Amanda DeGan, thank you for accepting your position. You bring more knowledge to this town than anyone could have ever hoped for. You have improved our processes in many ways in such a short time, and I know that you have so much more to offer this town for as long as you choose to stay with us. While I haven't had the pleasure of working with you for long, I hope to be able to work with you on future projects if they come along. I have much to learn from you and hope to keep doing so for a long time to come. A general thank you to all of you who have supported me over the years, for those that continue to vote for me, brought me your questions and concerns, offered positive criticism and suggestions of solutions to your concerns. This position is a thankless one, yet it's still nice to know that there are those out there who still positively support this volunteer job. And thank you to those that oppose me. Opposition is healthy, and it challenges a person, and it can help them overcome your negativity and continue to move forward. With hostile opposition, it can challenge someone to rise above and beyond to become a better person and a better leader. It can also teach a person how not to be, and that even if you oppose someone, unlike many cases out there, you can still have a professional conversation and come to a mutually beneficial agreement. I learned just as much from those opposing individuals as I did from those that supported and encouraged me. Last of all, but most importantly, thank you to my wife and daughter. They've been with me every step of the way. They have been there for the successful times, and they have been there for the meetings that several of us took. It was with their love, support, and encouragement that in the end, I can hold my head high because they know and I know that I did the right thing. This has been an experience of a lifetime, and my pleasure to serve this town and way many will never experience, meaning that I hope future councils don't experience the hatefulness and the constant negative criticism we have. I hope that councils going forward can work together for the future of Rome, so that it's not left on the roadside surrounded by growth. As the saying goes, Rome wasn't built in a day, but they were laying bricks every hour. You six now must continue to lay these bricks to move us forward. It will take patience and time to do so, but will only be easier if you work together. It's been one hell of a ride, so good luck, because you're gonna need it.
Ms. Priest? Well, Josh was honest. We ran against each other, and the whole time we were running against each other, we were supportive of each other. We even said, if I can't win, I'm glad it's you. And so ditto to everything that Josh has said. I would like to thank my friends. I made, when we moved here, we bought the house, but we were working out of state. So we really didn't live here for a long time. And when we moved here, some of the first people that approached me were named Eason. And it wasn't very long until they talked to me about doing this. Well, let me tell you, I knew nothing about politics. If I'd known, I might have said no, but I didn't know, and my background was of large projects and things like that, so I thought maybe I could help. And as Josh has explained, it just came down the pipe. It was through friends, though, that supported me for the last five years as I served, and most of you do not know that the last time that I ran, I was not well, and I had to have surgery. But we knew that if that got out, then probably wouldn't be re-elected. So my friends went door-to-door on my behalf, and they campaigned for me. And so, and it worked. So I don't know. But friendship has been proven to me in many ways over these last years. I also want to thank the staff. I've managed a lot of people over my years, and I can tell you that whether we're talking about the staff, including all those that got, that were upset and resigned, and then the staff that we have today, that when I read the paragraph about staff to the new council, you will see that they are exceptional, and they helped me almost every day as we tried to do our work. I also want to thank my neighbors. Now, a lot of people would say, well, why is that? I happen to live in Chisholm. There's not many things in Chisholm that they need as far as regular care to the area, but they are the group that you can almost go door-to-door and ask them what was their take on meeting bonds, what was their take on supporting the city council, supporting our staff. Almost unanimously voted in favor of the things that Rome needed. And so I thank my neighbors that supported the city council in the many things that we tried to accomplish. And I thank the citizens. I learned a lot. I learned different perspectives. I learned that needs are different in different places for different reasons, and it helped me have a great sense of history here. And history is a part of us always, and it just meant a lot to me to meet people and meet those that took for such a long time. And then, of course, there would be my husband. He's the guy that said, if you want to run, you can run. He's the guy that worked the hardest for the city. He was the guy that would go out and pick up the trash, and he didn't have to have the election time to do it. He was the guy that planted flowers every place he could find a place to plant it, and he's still that way, let me just tell you. And so, but he stood by me, and there were times I would come out of a closed session, and you know, I can't discuss things, but yet he knew when I would be upset and give me the support that I needed to just sift, you know, sift through all of that. So he's always been my partner, and I just couldn't have done it for five years without him. So that was way more history than you wanted to know right there, but I want to speak now to the elected council. Congratulations. I'm excited to know we have a capable, resourceful council. Thank you for your willingness to address challenges and blessings. Your main job is to conduct city business, and I'm confident you will do that with great care. With this final act, I want to share some thoughts with our new council and our mayor and our current staff. Some things will be uplifting, and some things will be low points in our city business. What I share is not to complain, but to offer you thoughts about the real purpose of city council, the pitfalls that might sidetrack you, the wonderful opportunities you have and impress on you that caring concern will linger and will affect the lives in Rome. the wonderful opportunities you have and impress on you that caring concern will linger and will affect the lives in Rome. Harm versus harmony. You have a unique opportunity to change the tide of Rome. For the past eight years, Rome has been self-inflicted with harmful rhetoric. And it's my prayer that rational behavior strives for harmony. I believe harmony is based on a common practice of involving everyone with mutual respect under the guidance of oath of office. After five years, I'm confident seeking individual power is nothing more than a distraction and undermines the real purposes of the city council as well as its responsibilities for the timely operation of the city. Demonstration of a unified council is in the form of productivity and the ethical behavior of the whole. Who can help you learn best practices as far as conducting business without politics? Who will help you understand the role and the duties of council members? It would be the city attorney and the city administrator. It is their job to give you unbiased information. Welcome. Transparency is the quality of being easy to perceive or detect. The city council is required to conduct business in public. It's also required to use closed session to protect the staff, to ensure confidentiality of competitive negotiations, and to comply with applicable laws. It's also a two-way street. The city has the right to correct misinformation, including erroneous documents. And those corrections are made publicly. Just remember, what you do, what you say, will be recorded on video. Written records and videos will become a part of Rome's historical information. History can be the guiding light for the future. I encourage you all to read the minutes for 2014. You will notice some of the challenges the county faced that year, the council faced that year that have yet to be resolved. You will see some things which adversely affected personnel and the Department of Productivity. You will see oath of office issues, infrastructural needs, and episodes of ignoring the recommendations of professional advisors. You will also see a few city improvements and positive changes through ordinances. It was a challenging year for Rome, and I believe we can learn from it. I only, I'm going to summarize so that this will be shorter. But I want you to know that during that time, if you read the very first month, the city CPA warned the city council that they were not doing what they were supposed to do with water and sewer fund. They told them, he told them that they had gotten to the point of losing $400,000 plus in the water wastewater funding. He went on to say that if the project, if, that if we didn't do something about it, we were approaching insolvency. And he said, the way to cure this is to have the separate budget from the general fund and to raise the rates. And I'm going to fast forward and tell you that in 2022, this council did raise those rates. But they weren't raised until we took action in 2022. And I can tell you, it was painful. It was something we didn't want to do, but we had to do. We had to be compliant to satisfy PCEQ. We had to do it. And believe me, it was not a happy day in my life to vote in favor of it. But it was the right thing to do for the right reasons, and it was done in the right way. And council, you are going to be faced immediately when you are sworn in with some things that are very common to what I've just said to you. And I trust you to do your homework, to learn from it, and then make up your mind to do the right things for the right reasons in the right ways. We tried in the last five years to take advantage of 2% or less interest rates for the bonds. But we didn't because we turned down two bonds for facilities, one bond for water wastewater, one bond for all of the roads that need to be repaired in this town. They were all defeated. You got your job in front of you, surely do. But I know you can do it. I know you can. I want you to know that personnel, the personnel that we had before couldn't stand the inviting any longer. And so the majority of them chose to resign not that long ago, just several months ago. And so we have been diligent in trying to replace them with also very good employees. But the message they sent and the history of it, we have to digest it. We have to know what happened so we don't repeat that again. I want to tell you, the staff we have today, every day they show up with the qualities that they have. They pay for themselves. No, I mean that. I mean that truly. We have staff that goes out and negotiates and saves us or earns us money that truly offsets their own salaries. And not just on the big things, it's the little things. Give them the respect they need, insulate them from politics. They deserve it. They earned it. Last thing I want you to know, that there are disappointments. Disappointments for me, and I have to be honest. There are many things I hope to see come, come along that didn't. I apologize to the citizens who counted on me to somehow find a way to successfully complete the needs related to water and wastewater facilities and roads. I tried to avoid politics, to walk in the middle of the road, which was at times difficult. I have tried to rely on my education, my life experience, and positive interaction for the benefit of all. I learned the value of brainstorming with a group of caring people who were elected and then put the city above their personal wants. I learned that the laws which govern the city are not the same as non-government businesses. I learned that every two years, the state legislature meets, changes the laws, and then the city has to adjust their ordinances and business practices. And just about the time you figure out what it was that they did that had all the changes then in the city, the legislature meets again. Oh, and where are they today? Uh huh. So be ready. I learned that most people really do appreciate the efforts of city council members. And it, it is humbling to hear supportive words. So council, I know you will unselfishly learn the details of problems, the opinions of possible solutions, and then take actions and make visions become reality. I trust the six of you to work together in harmony and to accomplish the things that Rome needs the most. I will warn you the message that you will hear from the public podium almost every meeting. Council, you need to fix the facility. Council, you need to fix the water problem. Council, you need to fix the wastewater issue. And council, you need to fix the roads, but don't you spend any money. So that's the summary of what you can expect from the month. The last thing that I want to share with you is I want to talk, I want to read six lines from a poem. And the poem is called "The Hill We Climb." And it was written by Amanda Gorman. And she's the, she was the, at that time, 22-year-old poet that read at the presidential inauguration. She was interviewed by CBS This Morning. And this is what she said about her poem. "I wanted it to be a message of hope and unity, but to not turn a blind eye to the cracks that really need to be fixed." And so I paraphrase Amanda Gorman. "We are striving to forge our town with purpose, to compose Rome, Texas, committed to all cultures, color, characters, and conditions of man. And so we lift our gaze not to what stands between us, but what stands before us. We close the divide because we know to put our future first, we must first put our differences aside. We seek harm to none and harmony for all." I thank you for listening. I thank you for allowing me to serve the city of Rome, and I wish you all well.
So the next order of business on the agenda will be to read the proclamations for votes, Mr. McCabe and Mrs. Priest. So I'm going to start with you, Mr. McCabe. I know you're not here in body, but you are in spirit. So a proclamation of the city council of the city of Rome, Texas, to Josh McCabe, Mayor Pro Tim Emeritus, for his service to the city of Rome from 2018 to 2023. Whereas the city council and staff members of the city of Rome, Texas, wishes to express their sincere appreciation to Josh McCabe for his invaluable service to the city of Rome. And whereas Josh McCabe served with distinction and honor as a member of the city council for five years. And whereas Josh McCabe's dedication, accessibility, and loyalty to Rome and its citizens has been instrumental to the welfare, growth, and development of the city of Rome. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council and staff teams of the city of Rome, Texas, hereby express their heartfelt appreciation to Josh McCabe, Mayor Pro Tim Emeritus, for his unselfish contributions and service to the city of Rome and its citizens. Passed and approved by the city council of the city of Rome, Texas, the 17th day of May, 2023. Shayna will hang on to that till you're back in town. Mrs. Priest, if I could have you join me, please? You've served on this council for quite a while. This, this is well worth the time that you've given to the city. Come up this side, ma'am. There you go. So this is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Rome, Texas, to Mrs. Elaine Priest for her service to the city of Rome from 2018 through 2023. Whereas the city council and staff teams of the city of Rome, Texas, wish to express their sincere appreciation to Elaine Priest for her invaluable service to the city of Rome. And whereas Elaine Priest served with distinction and honor as a member of the city council for five years. And whereas Elaine Priest's dedication and loyalty to Rome and its citizens has been instrumental to the enhanced welfare, growth, and development of the city of Rome. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council and staff teams of the city of Rome, Texas, hereby express their heartfelt appreciation to city council member Elaine Priest for her unselfish contributions and services to the city of Rome and its citizens. Passed and approved by the city council of the city of Rome, Texas, the 17th day of May, 2023.
Before Elaine leaves out of here, I'd like to say something. I just, I just want y'all to know how much I appreciate all y'all have done for the city. And I know there are plenty of people out there that, that think the same way. They feel the same way as I. Elaine, you had a way of explaining things, your opinion, so anyone could understand. And if they didn't, they just weren't listening. You were thorough, very, very thorough in your explanations, but I wouldn't have wanted it any other way. You taught me something every time you spoke. You hold a wealth of knowledge that will most certainly create a void on this council. Sorry. Josh, you kept us in line and stepped up every time you needed to, especially during this time as Mayor Pro Tim. You both held your convictions even when those convictions were attacked. I'm sorry you're stepping down because I know it's not just because you don't want to do it anymore. At some point, your sanity becomes more important. I will miss both of you and wish you all the happiness. Thank you again for your service to the city and for helping me.
Now, can we go to the canvassing? Number eight. Canvas the election results from May 6, 2023, general election.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually the city secretary, so I'll turn it to Shayna.
Thank you. All right, so I'll go through and read the election results. For council member place one, we have Jimmy Johnson with a total of 179 votes. For place two, we have council member Michelle Ty with 128 votes. Running against Billy Moore with 115 votes. For place three, we have Randall Loftus with 183 votes. And for place five, we have Deborah B. Kraft with 112 votes and Casey Schumake, 428 votes. The total amount of voters was 251.
Sit down. Number nine, certificates of election, statements of office, and oaths of office for elected council members.
We do need a vote. Carvin's telling me on the canvassing. Be a motion to accept the canvas results?
I make a motion to accept the canvas results.
Favor? So Mayor, moving on to number nine, this is also the city secretary.
Thank you. Jimmy Johnson, will you join me, please? Hi, Jimmy Johnson. That I will basically execute
Basically execute.
The duties of the office of councilman, place one.
Duties of the office of councilman. The place one.
City of Rome.
City of Rome.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas. I'll do.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution of the law of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Hi, Jimmy Johnson.
Hi, Jimmy Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly
That I have not directly
Or indirectly paid
Or indirectly paid
Offered
Offered Or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or anything of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding
For the giving or withholding.
Of a vote at the election.
Of the vote at the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward.
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
Confirmation.
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, I'll have Michelle Ty.
Hi, Michelle Ty. Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
Duties of the office of council member place two.
The duties of the office, council member place two.
City of Rome of the state of Texas.
City of Rome of the state of Texas.
To the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend.
And will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States. Of the United States. And of this state. So help me God.
I, Michelle Ty.
I, Michelle Ty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay.
Offered, promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office or employment.
Or promised any office or employment.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
At the election.
At the election at which I was elected.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be. So help me God.
Next, I'll have Mr. Randall Loftus.
I, Randall Loftus.
I, Randall Loftus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of council member place three.
Of council member place three.
City of Rome.
City of Rome.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
I.
I, Randall Loftus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value. Or promised in a public office or employment.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
At the election. At which I was elected.
At the election at which I was elected.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be. So help me God.
And last, I will have Mr. Casey Schumake.
I.
I, Casey Schumake. Do solemnly swear. I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member place five. The duties of the office of council member place five. City of Rome of the state of Texas. And will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. I. I, Casey Schumake, do solemnly swear or affirm. That I have not directly or indirectly paid. Offered, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute. Any money or thing of value. Or promised any public office or employment. For the giving or withholding of a vote. At the election at which I was elected. Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation. Whichever the case may be. So help me God.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, number 10, selection of Mayor Pro Tem for a one-year term and updating authorized signatures for bank accounts.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that is required. You do see the local government code that I have listed there on your agenda commentary. So I will turn it back over to council for action. This is your first official meeting after the election, and it is customary to make that recommendation at this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Michelle Ty for Pro Tem.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Are questions allowed?
Yes, absolutely.
How would you like to be addressed, Michelle?
I'm not sure what you mean.
By Michelle, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just want to make sure.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify something. In your opinion, previous Mayor Pro Tem, was that a positive relationship with the mayor or a negative relationship?
I believe it was a conflicting relationship. Yes.
And do you feel that was good for the community? Or was it a negative?
I believe that it was a negative for the community.
Do you intend to change that?
Well, I mean, it takes two people also. So yes, I would most certainly do that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eleven, National Police Week. I know it's got my name on it, but I haven't a clue.
Well, this is a proclamation for National Police Week. I'm sure you have information, Mayor.
Go ahead.
National Police Week is May the 14th through the 20th of 2023. To recognize National Police Week 2023 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Rome. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently 23,785 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 556 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 224 officers killed in 2022 and 332 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 35th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2023. And whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of a National Police Week which will be observed this year, the 14th through the 20th. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore be it resolved that the city of Rome will observe May 14th through the 20th, 2023, as the National Police Week in Rome, Texas, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
All right, next one is National Public Works Week proclamation.
So National Public Works Week is May the 21st through the 27th of 2023. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed public is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, including water, sewers, streets, public buildings, wastewater disposal, code enforcement, and engineering to provide these essential services to our citizens. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I Patricia Mitchell, Mayor of the City of Rome, dear hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as Public Works Week, building for today and planning for tomorrow.
All right, number 13, quick trip in the wall behind Public Works Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. This item involves a recent site visit that both Fire Chief Estes and I had to the section that runs right behind Public Works. You may or may not know that there is an old section of a wall that actually runs behind this current building and used to protrude out towards B.C. Rome. And just a routine site visit, I happened to notice that their dirt-moving equipment had hit that wall in two different spaces, knocking down between four to six feet in both areas. So I reached out to our contact, Mr. Honeywell with QT, and asked how we could repair the damage, knowing that that is something that has been important to the community. For new council members, you may not be aware, but the rock that actually was located on the site that QT is on now was salvaged. They set it aside for us. We now have it, I believe, at the West Wastewater Treatment Plant in case we would like to use it in any future building project. This is an original wall with this original building. So in talking to QT, we visited about the fact that if they repair the wall and they put it back together, it's not going to look anything like the one that we currently have. There are also some failures in the wall in other places. But I did talk with Mr. Honeywell, and he has offered, as you will see in your packet and in the email that I sent to you, he has offered at QT's expense to replace the wall and make it look the same as the one that they are building on their site to an approximate height of three feet, as well as put in a black vinyl chain link fence that would help keep folks out of the backside of Public Works. So I would recommend to you all that we accept that offer because it will save us several thousand dollars, that the city's not going to have to pay for that. And it's very generous of them to offer that in return for replacing the wall. But I need direction from you all as to which way you'd rather go. Do you want to salvage what's there, or do you want them to replace it?
Well, it sounds like salvaging it and then building a new one would be a much better option.
Yeah, I agree.
So that's what I'm recommending. I just need to hear from the remaining three council members if that's the direction you'd like to go.
Salvage and replace. Salvage and replace.
Agreed.
All right, thank you all. I told Mr. Honeywell I'd get back with him after this meeting so that they can hopefully mobilize fairly quickly because they are finishing up what they apparently put on site.
Number 14, public safety event used at flagpoles at Old City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that Mr. Heinsohn's here and maybe could speak to if you have questions. He has offered to host an event for public safety sometime in the spring. However, I think we've kind of missed some of those timelines. And he has also asked if he could fly flags and be responsible for the flagpoles that we are no longer using at the old site. Since that's public property, I just need some feedback from you all. I believe he'd like to put up a US flag on those poles.
I'm not sure which flagpoles you're talking about.
The Old City Hall?
Old City Hall. It sounds like a pretty good idea. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And as far as holding an event for public safety folks, I'm assuming that's agreeable with council. That's not something that I have broached with you all before. It would not be at city expense.
Where would it be held? Is there anything that we can think of that would negate that? Or?
No.
Can you share a little more information about what type of event?
Hey, everybody, how are y'all? My name's Robert Heinsohn. I do own a couple of businesses. We moved a business here to Rome. January was when we did it. And I want to do something because I got to meet a lot of our fire department, our police officers, everybody else like that. So I'm involved, City Forward, Forward Police Department, Forward Fire Department with our businesses there. I think it's very crucial that we give back to these guys and show them that we appreciate them. I'm not asking anything from the taxpayers or anybody else. But I'd like to bring the city together with other businesses, show the appreciation for these guys for the amount of things they do for us and sacrifices. We can bring the city in to do some things with it as well, right? There's a lot of business owners here that want to do this and want to do more of this stuff for us. So we want to be a part of the community. We want these guys to understand that. Every day, I'm probably at lunch with a firefighter or a police officer, but probably a lot more police officers than firefighters. We just don't get along, I don't know why. But that's what we want to do, okay? So we've talked about it a couple of times, about bringing in some other stuff for the kids and other people to come by. How cool is fire truck, police car, right? Like just hang out. That's all we're trying to do. Yeah, I'll probably have a couple of food trucks. I'll take care of our local guys, our people like that. They'll be available for the, you know, the community to come in as well, to hang out, break bread.
So a little outreach, a little appreciation, a little informational.
Yep.
Teaching, educational.
Yep.
I'm assuming that as this comes together, we would have more information for you as well as a date. But we didn't want to move forward if this was something council would rather not see.
I think that sounds great.
All right, 15, council member volunteer to review monthly bank reconciliation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that Mrs. Priest handled each month and would come and would come in diligently and have a second set of eyes on our bank reconciliations and the things that came through from our accounts. And I need a volunteer who might be willing to come in and do that. I believe it takes about a half an hour, maybe an hour, but nothing more. And it is only once a month.
I'd be open to helping you out with that.
You need a motion?
I just need direction as to who would like to fill that spot. Hey, Carvin.
I'm going to appoint Casey as the monthly bank reconciliator.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Is there any executive session? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Who seconded? All in favor? Very good, thanks.